Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the retreat to order. Well, good morning, everyone. I almost said good afternoon because it feels like it's afternoon. Sorry, I've been in the car for an hour and a half trying to drive my son to Zoo Camp, his favorite camp of the And then I was on the hunt for coffee. I'm really excited for this retreat. This is the first time, I think, we've all been in person and I can't remember, probably since January of last year, so about a year and a half. So, welcome back, everybody, and we have some new faces here. So, some members who haven't actually, who've seen us via Zoom but haven't actually been in this room, so welcome to the boardroom, I guess. I'm really looking forward to this retreat. I think this is kind of a really great time for us to reflect on what's happened over the past year, so I'm really looking forward to it. We have Robert Hall from NASB. He's gonna kind of set the stage for us, and I'm really excited, looking forward to the student panel that we have this afternoon to talking about and the future of schools and reimagining schools. You know, we talked so much about how this last year has impacted students. It's really gonna be interesting to hear from them and hear how it's really impacted them, so I'm really looking forward to that. And then, of course, looking forward to seeing our goals and priorities, so looking forward to a great retreat, and it's just really great to see all the faces here.
Thank you. And I agree, you know, I think this is the first time since I've been here that we've all been together, because I think our very first meeting, I know nobody was here. And I think what's, what's great about today is we've spent most of the past year really sort of reacting to things that are happening to us. And in the past few weeks and months, we've started to transition that, and today feels like a very intentional step forward where, where we're starting. This is gonna give us a chance to regroup, redefine our work, and start taking better steps forward. So it's great to have everybody here. It's great to have Robert here. I look forward for the chance to have some conversations and focus on some of the work we know that we need to do. And it feels sort of symbolic and sort of with the shift of what our work and our purpose will be. I'll talk more tomorrow about just some of the changes, even some of the things we've been able to do recently, and that's really sort of exciting in terms of how we're gonna be able to start moving forward. So, thank you, everybody, for being here. And then, lastly, Shan reminded me to tell you that for board members, we are going to get all of you badges so that you're not waiting outside or stuck in the elevator. So, your access will be, you can get in, and so that will be hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have those for you. So that will be a nice, again, another transition, since we'll have you here in the building more. I think that would be great. So, thank you, everybody, and thank you, staff, who are here, and I'm looking forward to the next two days.
Yes. All right, so, Robert, do you wanna come up here? So, everybody, I don't know if all of you have had a chance to attend NASB. Well, I know a lot of it's still online, but Robert's still online too. So, but this is the Executive Director, President, I think we call you now, President of, CEO of NASB, National Association of State Boards of Education, which I have been really involved in. I'm the immediate past Chair of the organization of the Board of Directors, and I was the Chair last year. So, Robert has led our organization for about two years now.
Three.
Three years. And we are so lucky that he wanted to retire, and we said no, and then the pandemic hit. And we were like, oh, yeah. So he said he would stay on, and we were so lucky he did because we would have been in big trouble. So, he's done so much for the organization. He's been great at just communicating with state board members throughout the pandemic, letting us know what we can do, how we can help schools, what we should be looking at, making sure that we focus on equity. So, it's just been absolutely phenomenal, the resources. If none of you guys have attended a NASB annual conference or legislative conference, I would highly recommend that you do. I know that some, I think, John, you attended the New Member Institute, correct?
Yeah. I've attended some of them.
The annual, annual conference, too?
No, the Fridays.
Oh, the office hours, yeah, yeah. Yeah, the office hours, those have been really great, too. So, yeah, if anyone for resources or anything, that I think that they have been absolutely amazing, especially getting through the last year. So, I would continue to reach out to them, and if you haven't attended the New Member Institute, Georgia and Brian, I think you should. All right, so I'll hand it over to you, Robert. Thank you.
Oh, well, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. Brooke, and thank you so much for your hospitality and allowing me to come. Actually, I was in this room June 11th last year, but I was up there. I was zooming with you, June 11th last year, and I think there were only three people.
Yes. You guys are all socially distanced, yeah, I remember that.
I was blessed when I had on sweatpants. At least I, you know, put on clothes. Thank goodness, I thought maybe we could just ease into this a little bit. Anyway, I appreciate your invitation. It's really a pleasure to be here. And as Brooke said, we are the association that represents state boards of education, not the district boards of education. We deal with 46 state boards and territories. Why do I say 46? There are four states that do not have state boards of education, that there is not a state board of education, that it's all either governed via the Commissioner or the Governor or Secretary of Education. Anybody want to venture? Guess what those four states are? Now, you'll know this. I do a lot of group interaction here, folks. This is the audience participation part. If you don't talk, I will call on you. So, anybody want to venture? Guess what any four states might be?
Idaho.
No?
Idaho, yes.
And Alaska. Alaska does have a state board, and there are, you know, everybody thinks they're unique, and they have unique problems, but they don't, except Alaska. They're the one that I think you probably have truly unique issues in the country because of their, you know, where else do we have airplanes to take kids to school, so the school bus? Minnesota does not have a state board. Cota does not. Wisconsin does not, and New Mexico does not. Those, other than that, everyone else has a state board of education. Right before I leave, I'll ask those states again, so if you wanna
Write them down for the class later on.
Anyway, Brooke has served as our Board Chair. Our last in-person conference was the one that she chaired, a conference in in your neighboring state.
Oh, in Omaha.
When we were in Omaha, anyway.
And I had a one-month-old. I noticed of your lack of sleep, man.
Anyway, we also have two affiliate organizations. We have the organization for the State Board Executives, which is much of the state boards have an executive director and executive secretary. We have an affiliate organization that those folks belong to, that do professional development and in conferences. We also have an affiliate organization that your state has been very involved in, that is, we have the National Association of State Board Attorneys. And so, Thomas actually was the Chair of that organization at some point in time, so you have a longstanding record of leadership and advocacy, so thank you so much for that. When I spoke with you last year on June 11th, we did a lot of conversation, if you recall, around boardsmanship, about what does it mean to be a board member? What are the attributes needed for an individual board member? How does, how can the board take advantage of their authority? So, we're gonna consider that as prologue, that we're gonna try to keep that in mind when I wanna cover any of that today. If you're a Shakespeare fan, you know, that's where that phrase comes from, it's from the tempest, when Antonio says, "What's past is prologue." Of course, he was getting ready to murder someone when he said that. Consider that. Also, if you visit, watch, if you've been seeing the National Archives, that is on the cornerstone. What's past is prologue. So, let's consider what last year is, is, is prologue to today, but also let's think about what's past is prologue in terms of the year and a half that we just spent in this country and in this, you know, around the world with, with the pandemic, because those are some things that we need to keep in mind. You're gonna spend the next couple of days thinking about priorities, about what you need to do, what you would like to do. Let's try to keep those things in mind, because that's a, we're gonna talk a little bit in depth about those things in just a moment. But the next line, after Antonio says, "What's past is prologue," he says, when we're talking to, oh, I can't remember his colleagues. Action, I can't think of anything. So just, anyway, if you're any high school English teachers here, forgive me, but I forgot about the campus. But he says, "This is your and my destiny," after he said, "Past is prologue." So, this is your moment in time. This is your destiny to help build and lead through recovery of this pandemic. So, let's keep that in mind, too. Not only is past prologue, but this is our destiny to lead forward. I'd like to start. There's a black screen this year that's not allowing me to change slides. No. I can close this?
No, no.
Yeah. Yep.
It should work now.
Okay, all right. There you go. Thank you so much. I didn't wanna What I put on the screen is kind of, what I'd like to talk about is doing capacity for effective leadership and governance, because that really is the two words that really talk about your role as a state board of education, is to lead and to govern at a state level. And those two, those two words are distinctly different, but there, there's a lot in common. You need to think about both of those things, about leading and governing. And so, as we get into conversations, let's, let's think about those two words. I'd like to start, first of all, I wanna hear from you. I'd like for each board member to do two things for me. I want you to, in three words, just three words, tell us why you accepted the invitation to serve for the State Boards of Education, the Governor's Office offered to the opportunity. When you had the opportunity, what are three words that say why you said yes, why you're sitting at this table today? And secondly, is there any question you, that you would like for us to answer today before, before I exit? And that's fine, if you don't have anything that you want answered or wanted me to touch on, that's fine, but think about it. What are three words that would say why you're sitting at this table today? What brings you here? And let's just start over here.
I love kids.
Okay. I love kids. Three words. Perfect.
Make a difference.
Excellent.
Build our workforce.
I'm sorry.
Build our workforce.
Build our workforce.
Community college advocacy.
Wow. You must have seen my slide.
And all three words.
Students' voices matter.
Absolutely. Couldn't agree more.
Serve students.
Serve students. Right.
I have two. Stewardship, by the way. I can't think of alliteration for the service and stewardship.
Yeah.
Okay, do you want to tell us your second one, just to, you know?
Oh, that's my, those are the, service and steward.
Okay, okay.
Community colleges.
Promote community colleges. Excellent. I think those three words tell us a lot about the perspective that you bring, as well as the passion that you bring to that. So, thank you for sharing for that. Now, no one said they had a question to ask, so we're gonna keep this informal conversation, just bring up your questions as we go. I won't hesitate to, to, to answer. And also, recovering educator, so it's hard for me to talk and sit, so I'm probably gonna be jumping up and, you know, going to flip chart or whatnot, so if I get up, it's not that I'm running away, I'm just gonna talk a little bit. Again, and we're gonna talk about the capacity for effective leadership and for governance. And to do that, I have basically five objectives that we're trying to gather today. First of all, we wanna examine some of the ways that the education landscape has shifted due to the global pandemic. Some of those things that, that may have changed. We also want to explore the opportunities to exist for state boards of education to lead through the period of post-pandemic recovery. Thirdly, we want to identify some of the challenges that boards are likely to face in the upcoming months and years. And fourthly, we want to revisit, as is prologue, we want to revisit the levers of influence of state boards of education to establish and support an aggressive driven policy agenda. Because that really is, I'm looking at your agenda here for the next couple of days, I'm assuming that's what you want. That you want to support, wanna establish, and you want to support, an aggressive, results-driven agenda. And so, in order to do that, what are some of the levers of influence that you, as a state board, may have in order to accomplish that? And so, we're not gonna get into the particulars of, of that policy agenda. We're not gonna talk about some nuance of it. That's your work for the next couple of days. But what we do wanna discuss is, what are some ways to move in that? What are some of the ways of bringing systems reform for that? And then, lastly, the last thing I listed here was to answer questions as time permits. But again, let's keep this conversation, interrupt me at any time. I'm very mad, I'm used to being interrupted, so we can just Vice versa. We have an ongoing dialogue, that's what our marriage is. Let's talk a little bit about the mission of NASB, as well as how that impacts your mission, because you have a mission statement. You have a mission as a state board. We have a mission as an organization, and the two mesh really closely, but I'd like to use our mission to point out three or four words that I think will help define our conversation. Our mission is to develop, support, and empower citizen leaders on state boards of education, to strengthen public education systems. So, students of all backgrounds and circumstances of school, work, and life. And we've had this mission statement now, I think, about three years, that we, this has been the mission statement that we have in operating board on, and we revisit it regularly, and it still, it says exactly what we're after, but it also, I think it represents your work as a state board, and I want to point out three words. The first is citizen leaders. That's the role of the state board of education. You are not legislature, you're not the governor, you are not the district board. Your role sitting here is to represent the citizens' voice of the state, of the, of the state of Iowa. They rely on you to be their voice, and you're here to represent the voice of the citizens. And some state boards, as you know, probably may or may not know, are elected, there are some are elected partisan, some are elected non-partisan, some are elected by congressional districts, some are elected statewide, and others are appointed. It's a little easier sometimes, I think, to those who are appointed and who are elected, to see that role as citizen leader, because the citizens put it by election. But I think sometimes an appointed board needs to be reminded that a little bit, that that is your role, is to be citizen leader. You're not a professional educator. Some of you may be, by your past work, but you're, you're, you're not here as a professional, you're here as a citizen leader. And the second word I would point out is systems. That's the focus of a state board of education, is to deal with education system, not with individual schools, not with individual teachers, not with principals, not getting down to that nitty-gritty. But what is the system that you're, that you are organizing and leading? So, thank you of everything, and a systemic model. And, and I don't, I know you've heard me, if you've been on into conferences or been on national, there's a, there's an illustration I use many, many times that I think drives home a little bit what I mean by systems, and that is my iteration of the the sea star story. I used to call it the starfish story until I was at a state board meeting one time, and there happened to be a scientist that was on state board, and he said, "You know, that's not a starfish, that's a sea star." I said, "Okay," so it's not a starfish, it's a sea star. But this, the story you hear a lot when you're talking, especially when you're working with teachers and whatnot, is that there are two folks walking along, along the beach, you know, they're separated by several feet, and the beach is just cluttered everywhere with sea stars or starfish that have washed ashore. The second, the second person's watching, watch, watching the first person walk. The first person walks along and picks up a starfish, throws it into the ocean, walks a little more, picks up the starfish, throws it into the ocean. Well, the second person finally catches up with the first and said, "Excuse me, what are you doing?" He said, "Saving off the starfish." He said, "Look at this beach," the second guy, he said, "Look, there's just, it's cluttered with hundreds of them. You can't possibly make a difference." Well, he reached out, he picked up and threw it in. It made a difference to that. Well, that's a wonderful story. That's the role of the teacher, the principal of the school, is to pick up that starfish and to say, "What is your role? Your role is to think about that ocean, to think about the ocean in which the starfish are swimming. What is the ecosystem?" Excuse me. What is the ecosystem that allows that starfish to thrive and to to just have a successful, healthy life? That's your role as a state board of education, is to think about the system in which it swims. It's not to be focused necessarily on students, not, not on the school, but what is the system? So, as we talk about systems today, that is the ocean, the ecosystem, and that's what you do. You control the educational ecosystem in this state that is under your purview. So, systems. The third word in the mission statement that I want to point out is the word "all." The word "all," of course, is where we get to equity, the conversation about all students. And we don't literally use the word "all students." We try to, we want to define it as students of all backgrounds and circumstances, being prepared for success, to succeed in school, work, and life. You see many organizations, their, their mission statement, they talk about that students will succeed in spite of, and then they list the differences. We don't use that deficit language, nor should state boards use that deficit language. The language is, we could consider equity as an asset. What are the assets that students of various backgrounds, with various different lessons in terms of the assets they bring, rather than the deficit they bring. And so, when we think about the whole issue of equity, we always pair up with excellence. It's around equity and excellence. And most of you, but at least some of the staff, obviously, are familiar with good friend of mine, Michael Fallon, and Michael always says that excellence is your greatest equity proposition. That if you focus on excellence, then equity takes care of itself. You talk about excellence for every student. So, you know, equity does not have to be a discussion divisive, it does not have to be a discussion, but that is is problematic. It's focusing on excellence for every student. That is it. That is your equity proposition. And we go forward and we define what we mean by equity, diversity, and inclusion, but we don't define equity, we define what an equitable education. And I think that is something that, that state boards of education might wanna consider. It's not just talking about equity, but what is an equitable education? And, you know, I think that everybody can agree that it's one of which all students receive what they need prior at school. That's the role of equity here at the state board of education. So, I wanna talk really quickly again about the role of the system in a way that makes, hopefully will make sense. Basically, the work of NASB as a state board can fall into three, three categories. The first one is, at our organization, we call it college credit civic credits. That has to do with students exiting your system prepared for life. That is, that is the number one goal of an education system, is that you're graduating and that you're exiting students who are ready to succeed in whatever they choose, be it college, big career, whatever. That is the what of your work. So, the what is college credit civic credits? It's what you do. The second is under what conditions and where that work takes place, and that is safe and healthy school. That's the second piece of system that is of for effective education. And the third is the who. The who are the developing and the sending teachers? Who's responsible for making that happen? So, you had the what, the where, and the who. And at the center of all that, of course, you had the cross-cutting initiatives that really kind of go across all of them. But at the center of all that is equity and excellence. So, think of those as the three, the what, the where, and the who of education centered around education equity, but it's all surrounded by this, yeah, by this pink circle. That represents the system. That is your purview, that system that ties it all together, that makes that all work. Now, let me ask you, what, what drives the system? When you talk about system, what really drives the system?
People, policies, processes.
People, policies, processes. That's excellent answer, and three words and all alliterated. Yeah, that, that's true. That, that is what, that's what drives this. Anybody else wanna say what drives the system? There's a word that drives the system. It's not necessarily, necessarily a positive thing. That's also inertia. Things are always been done this way, we just keep moving it forward. So, the system is also driven by inertia. So, taking a, a cue there from something that Kim Lee said was around policy. That is truly the part of the system that you probably control more than anything else. Your role is policy. Your role is not implementing policy. That role belongs to other people in this building, that belongs to people in schools, I mean, the district, it's implement. You are not implementers. You are the owners, the developers, and the guardians of policy. What is your definition? How would you define the word policy? What do you think policy is? Legislative practices. Okay, so can you mention your practices?
It could also be like the guidelines that were sent out to schools this year. It's not necessarily set policies, but like guidelines on mask mandates and quarantines and stuff like that.
Regulations? Rules?
Required expectations. Required expectations.
Required expectations, all right. If you look at the dictionary, you'll find a definition of policy that says it's a course or principle of action adopted or proposed by government, party, business, or individual. Sounds wonderful, but there's another definition of policy that I like best, especially as you're thinking about planning and looking at priorities. The Johnson School of Public Policy at the University of Texas in Austin uses this definition, that policy is a sustained course of action toward desired results. Think about think about your work. Your rules, your regulations, your expectations, whatever you just referred to. How are they living as a sustained course of action toward desired results? You have a mission, you have goals, you know what you want to accomplish. Are your policies setting you on the course to accomplish? That's what you should consider with every single policy, that's what you, every single policy that and that, that's currently on the books, or that you want to review or that. Build this policy further on the course of action with our desired results. If not, then is it time to either revise it or abandon? Early in my career, when I was a district supervisor, I said I wanted to leave that job with our policy manual being on a three-by-five index card instead of the 567 pages it was at the time, because there were so many policies that were either outdated, ineffective, or downright barriers to what you want to achieve. So, your role as state board of education is not just about pounding on more policies or an action policy, it's about abandoning policy. Strategic abandonment is a wonderful initiative to take, and to take on. And
I think that, may I?
Yeah.
That's an interesting point. I think it'd be critically important to determine what, what respect is the board a policymaker? I might take exception to what you're saying.
Sure.
Just policymakers. In fact, I'm not so sure, in many instances, whether we make policy or not. We implement, we rewrite rules, and, and we do a number of things that way. But I'm, I'm trying in this limited frame that I have, to see in what respect we are policymakers, because it is important to identify those, and I don't disagree with your premise, I mean, but, but in what respect is the board a policymaker? Answer that question. Because that's why I struggled with as a board manager for nine years, and what respect, if I just, if I just doing things the same way over and over again. Clearly, different state boards have different authorities, and Iowa would be Missouri's, let's say.
Absolutely.
So, again, as a board, I think that's a critical question that needs to be answered. In what respect are we policymakers? And so
I'll throw that back to you, sure. I use the board policy as a global term, meaning like, most state boards either have the all state boards have a unique set of abilities. There are no two states that have exactly the same. And it all is either governed either constitutionally or by legislative practice or legislative enactment. So, when a legislature passes a piece of legislation and you are to promulgate rules, that is policy, and that's why I'm calling that policy. Your rules are also part of your policy. So, within the scope of what you own, you are a policymaker, and also, you're, you're
We're defining those. We're defining the policy that the state legislature has put in flex on that. No one disagrees with that. In fact, that's a major We're defining those. We're defining the policy that the state legislature has put in flex on that. No one disagrees with that. In fact, that's a major part of our job.
Right, it is. Absolutely.
And I suppose you could say that we can bend those any way we want to, but I don't think we do that. Try to clearly implement what the legislature has in mind.
Sure, absolutely.
So again, I'm back to my question again. In what respect are we policymakers? That's, that's a unique responsibility of the state legislature. They said, you probably the rules.
Mike, because I was trying to prepare for our discussion on goals, I looked up the duties of the state board, which, you know, I'd kind of don't know if I have to really pay close attention to. But you know, there's like adopting rules, blah, 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 establishing standards and procedures. Those are the kind, and there's, you know, others, but those are the kinds of things that to me are policy. Those, there are other things in here that clearly are not policy. But there are several items listed that I think really do define our role in policymaking.
Well, when we have the, the different recommendations come before us as far as the rewrites and stuff of the various chapters of the code, and we rely on the expertise of the people that work in this department to do the, the research, the background, the interactions with others. When Thomas brings us something as far as, and we'll have that on tomorrow's agenda. You know, I look at it, is it well thought out? Stakeholder's been involved. That's been their response. And I always feel like I get an accurate description of the work that's gone into that. And if I feel comfortable with that, I certainly support that. And so to me, it's, it's not a matter of us doing the policy work. It's a matter of we rely on other experts who do all the groundwork and bring those policies, chapter revisions, et cetera, to us for our approval. And they're, so far, they've been doing their due diligence. Impressed with what I've seen.
But there was one time, I remember, Mike, when I think it was, rules came before us. And there was with the dyslexia group and they came to us and they said that, you know, they didn't like it because of something. And so we discussed it and we actually had that, you know, we wanted them to go back and rewrite it and kind of come up with a different definition or, you know, so I think that that is something that we have. I mean, so that was us driving policy because we could have just approved it the way it was, but because a group came to us and said that, you know, this would be better. We decided to go back and, you know, and so that's something that, I, I mean, a lot of times we don't do that, but I mean, it's not necessary, but where it is necessary, I think we do, you know.
Yeah, I would argue that's a rare exception. But still, I agree. I mean, I don't disagree at all. It just
I mean, the department is doing a good job. I hope that that's not something else.
You just have to challenge that. Let me go to the next thing, the next screen to kind of talk about that a little bit. Because as a state board of education, when, when those things come before you, you may not, the legislature may say, this is what we want the policy to be, but you have the authority and to say, how, what's that going to look like? You know, and that is, that is policy itself. That is, that is a policy itself. But I think that that is where you ask the question. About what we're doing with this, is that driving us toward the results we want to get? And how do we structure this in such a way that it works that? So maybe you can structure it this way rather than this way toward desired results. Is it going to be stronger? Does it need to be weaker? So I think that, that you are a policymaker, but also we have a lot of things in, in that we, that I call phantom policy. That people think there's policy that, like, a teacher's principles, we can't do that. There's a policy against that. Well, there's probably not. There are a lot of phantom policies out there. It's the urban legend policy, you know. The old adage, you know, can't forgive the permission, but there are probably a lot of phantom policies that even use a state board thing. Well, we don't have the authority for this or that. Then you probably do have the authority for that. It's important to know what your authority is. And there are some things I, I guarantee you, there are some things this board owns. And the legislature has given you, for the constitution, it's given you. For instance, staying, learning standards, professional development standard, and whatever standard you have, those, those, know what you own and swim in your lane using those, but don't advocate authority in those things that you go to think bold about that. State boards of education, I say have three levers of authority. Those are the three that are on the screen. You have the power of policy where it exists. Where you have that. But absent that power of policy, you also have the power to question and you have the power to convene. Meaning that if you, even if it's something outside your purview, you are a sitting government body. And you can say, we officially want to ask those that do have the authority, want to ask these questions. What, you know, we, we, this is a priority for us. Can you please give us these answers? You also have the power to convene groups to discuss those things and do a task force on something or do a committee on this or that and bring people together to discuss it. And when you combine all three of those, you have what we call the power of collective action. That, that you do as a policymaker have other levers of authority to combine with that power of policy. But it's important to, to know what your authority is and to act within that authority. So I, I should have done a little more research on what your authority is in this state, but I don't.
You've done a great job. I just do that.
I know it's important.
Actually.
And I think that's a previous life of yours, isn't it?
I was a teacher.
Exactly. So I guess the point of, of, is that, is that regardless of, well, for instance, there are some state boards that almost set up a support arm of that. But they don't answer to anyone. The constitution gives them full right of education. On the other end, there are some state boards that have no authority. They're, they're an advisory council. You're somewhere in between. You're somewhere in between those two. It's just know what it is you own and don't advocate that and be bold with it.
I, I kind of agree with Mike on this, but I think I think we have what I call a shared policy development in that oftentimes the legislature may go a direction we don't think should be going. Or because the director's is really ultimately responsible to the governor, there may be some issues there. So I think there's a shared policy role and, and I'm kind of like Michael. I, I don't know exactly where maybe the board fits in that structure. Sometimes I think we just, we don't have a lot of authority.
I'm only in my second year here, and the pandemic has overwhelmed everything that we talked about. I'm used to, you know, back home, being more the policy type or event. But I, I see this as, we just look at our agendas. I mean, we do continue to talk about equity. We talk about board priorities. But we're in the weeds on school districts and rules and that stuff. A lot of the meetings that, that I've attended. So I think we're a little of both, but I think, I think the legislature, the overall policy center, I think the department is the implementer. And I think we're advisory to the department and we're also an arbiter when things come to us to make decisions. But we do have a policy impact. So that's what I'd like to do.
I, I mean, I agree with that. I think that sometimes we have great discussions in these meetings, right? But the actions do not always reflect the discussions. And I feel like there's some frustration with that in this past year. And so I get what you two are saying, because I, I feel the same way. Is sometimes the actions don't necessarily line up with what we talked about. And that's, that's frustrating for students. That's frustrating for school districts. And that's frustrating for us on the board, right? And I understand that there are different things that we have to listen to, to take those actions. But I think that there's some frustration is what I'm hearing from where our authority is.
Another layer of this makes it interesting state to state is that in addition to, I talked earlier about how state board of education members get to the table. Some are elected partisan, some are elected nonpartisan, some are appointed. In addition to that, there's every possible connection with how, how does your state commissioner, state superintendent get? Some are, some state superintendents are elected. Some are elected partisan, some are elected nonpartisan, some are appointed by the governor. Some are hired by the, by the board of education, board of education actually seeks and hires someone to do that. And you, when you get each of those different complexions together, you have all these dynamics of relationships with, you know, with the governor, with the legislature. You have some state boards that the legislature appoints the entire state board. So it's just really interesting that you have to know and navigate those relationships. And that's the, you know, that the old adage is, you know, make your friends before you need them. But that is where you, you, you deal with the, with those and you, and you just navigate within that. And there's no right way and wrong way. It's just knowing what that way is and taking advantage of it. And if you have that different relationship with your governor, with your legislature, that's where you use the power of the question. That's where you use the power to convene. And we've worked together as, you know, that, that system, that pink system that I had is not just yours. That is the state education system. Which in that is the legislature and that is the governor. And also, some state boards are in the constitution. That says that you have that authority. Yours is not. Yours is in statute. That your state board does not exist in constitution. As a matter of fact, I said there were four states that did not have state boards. Three of those states used to have a state board and it was in the statute. And they've got things that became so rancorous that the legislature just wrote them out. That's the law. It's no longer existed. So, you know, they're, they're just so, it's fascinating to watch, to watch the, the maneuverings of all that. So anyway. But I'll probably digress.
I think something with state boards is that, and I guess I didn't really realize how kind of political it is, but not, right? So I think we all come here to, to do something like you two could, to do, you know, to serve kids, to do, you know, what's right. And I just before I joined, I guess I didn't realize how, I think going to NASB and like hearing other state, I mean, just how highly political it can be. And it can be used as a bargaining chip. And I mean, these are just, I had no idea. And so I think it was really interesting to hear about other state boards and just the struggles they had. And then just kind of, I mean, yeah, I think we're kind of, I agree that we're kind of probably somewhere in the middle, but you know, that's, I mean, I guess that's good and bad because maybe we don't have all the authority that other state boards have. But then also, you know, I mean, yes, okay, fine. There's a, I think Senator keeps on trying to get us written out of code, but that's what we at, so we're still here. But I mean, you know, I think that, but I think that it still can be somewhat political because I think there's still some parameters that we operate within, right? We still have, you're limited by what's in the code. We're limited by certain things, right? So I think that, that's something that whether we like it or not, we all kind of have to keep in the back of our minds. So.
And Brooke, something just dawned upon me. It's that when I went, I did not ask you for your three words. I went from one side of the room to the other.
Mine would be reducing the achievement gap.
R A G. Alright. These are great conversations. We can talk about them all day. I think they're important to understand, but I think these overarching things is just know the authority, live within it and do what you can to move toward an agenda of your desired results. Keeping in mind what it is that you want to achieve and keeping in mind what policy questioning or convening power you have in order to accomplish that. When you think about systems as well, this is what I call the whole doctrine. It's that student performance is what you really are after. It's the student performance is only as good as the value, action, and beliefs of the adults and students. That means teachers, school leaders, and policy, being state board of education. So if, if you're looking at your end results that you want, your students, you know, student performance, realize that that's only going to be good as the values, the actions, and the beliefs that you bring. And that we know that many, that you all have the great values, you all have great beliefs, but it takes action in order to accomplish that. Alright, now I want to shift gears just a little bit as we're thinking about now some of the the objectives I mentioned at the beginning about taking a look at where we have been, taking a look at where you might want to go. I want to talk about the three Rs of, of education this morning. Typically, you think the three Rs of education, what do you want to say? Read and write and arithmetic, which is the stuff where I was raised. That's what they were, the three Rs. But today, we're linking up about education, leadership, and governance today. I want to talk, I want to ask this to be framed, to reflect, and to rethink. Especially as you're looking at, looking at some of your priorities, looking at some of the things that you want to accomplish over the next few years. Let's start with reframing. Every, every good teacher, you always begin your lessons with an essential question. What is the essential question you want to answer? Well, conventionally, if you were sitting here today in a retreat and you were wanting to think about, you know, what you have before you, the conventional question that you would probably ask yourself is where do you see education moving in the future as we exit the global pandemic? Where do we see education moving? I think when I had, I had a call with Brooke and Eddie a couple of weeks ago, thinking about this, which I think that's actually one of the questions we said was, let's reframe that question. What do we see education moving? Well, I'm going to say that I want to reframe that question. That's not the question we want to ask. We want to put a big no sign over that question. The central question, I think, for you for the next couple of days, as you think about your, your goal of education is where can we, the Iowa State Board of Education, take education as we exit the global pandemic? It's not where is it going, but where are we going to take it? It's not a matter, it's a matter of not being reactive.
There's a difference there.
There is a, there's a difference. One is where is it going? And we, how can we follow up there? And how can we react to it? The difference is where do you want to take it? Because you have, in my opinion, a golden opportunity, state boards of education and state education systems and state chiefs and state legislators and governors right now have an opportunity before them that has never existed in my career. I have worked in education now for, this is I think my 48th year. I started when I was three. Anyway, I didn't think this was my 48th year. And we, and this is the first time that we have a set of circumstances that we have that we can accomplish some of the things that we had hoped to accomplish. For years, you know, we've said, we need to reform education so it can do this. We can reform the education of that, but things have prevented us from doing that. I think that now that the circumstances exist, that there's an appetite for, for some bold action. There are resources for bold action. And there's a time that people can see that things can be different. So I want to ask you a question. I'm talking about what some of those things are in just a moment, but you have in this state, I don't know if it's not just state board of education, but you have, you know, adhered to department and the governor and the legislature. You have resources that you have never had before. You have, you have, and I'm not talking about just money, but you have monetary resources right now coming to you from the federal government that are unbelievable. You have seven times your, your, your annual allocation coming once, one time, you know, that's, that's huge. What are you going to do with it? How are we going to use it? This is your legacy moment, ladies and gentlemen. Let's think, let's fast forward 10 years from now, 15 years from now and look back at what happened. What is going to be your legacy that you did with this opportunity?
That really goes to districts. So the power is in the districts.
That's, yeah, the, the education system as a whole.
But there is over a hundred million dollars that goes to the department.
Okay.
And we can prioritize how it goes out to districts. And that's where you have the effect. And we'll talk a little bit about more of that even tomorrow. But how that's used, even how we prioritize it last spring reflected some of our priorities. And it wasn't necessarily as involved with the board. And some of the new money has some more drivers attached to it in terms of how it has to be used, but there is still, that opportunity is still there. Yeah.
I appreciate Kim's question because I don't think we've had that discussion. I think we've raised that question. Federal dollars, where are they going and how are they distributed? And I know we've had a conversation. But a hundred million dollars, I mean, I don't know that I'm on the responsibility of writing checks. But again, that, that's significant money, certainly. I think we would agree to be able to get somehow to, to make up that gap that we created or that COVID created for kids. Yeah.
Robert, just a second. In your, well, your opening talked about us serving public schools. Is that our only venue is public? What about private?
Absolutely. Whatever your purview is.
Okay. Well, I was just trying to get a handle on.
His mission, it was, wasn't it? I had the same question, but I think we serve all accredited.
Right, yeah.
But I think you, that was, I think that was his NA, you know, NASB. That's their mission. So I don't know that you were saying that. You were trying to impute that to us.
When we use the term public schools, we also mean charter schools, anything, any, any type that is in our public purview.
I had the same question.
We don't, most state board of education have no control over private schools, but they do have many charter schools. So public means anything under which is under your purview.
Okay.
You are, you are a public body.
Right.
And whatever, whatever your purview is, a public school.
But we have authority over accredited, non-public schools. I mean, that's right in the statute, right?
And we provide exemptions to, in some cases, exemptions to folks that, yeah.
Exactly.
But regardless of whether you have direct authority over writing those checks you do have the power of influencing, but you have, you say, these are our priorities. This is what we want to have. This is the system we want to create. And therefore you can, you influence how that, you know, can be. You can put restrictions or not restrictions, some parameters around some of that. You're exactly right. That, that work really happens at the state, at the district and school level. But you have some, you have some level of authority over that in terms of influence.
To the power of the question, like on a board then, as I think about it, I probably need to be asking, I need to be aware when, when the money is getting distributed. I need to be, I need to be timely on the questions. Because like right now, I don't know when it's been, you know, deployed out or, or is it sitting on, in a bank somewhere waiting for decisions to be made? Like I, I don't know all that, when to ask those questions or you just keep on asking until, you know.
So we've gone over that at each board meeting and there'll be some more tomorrow that we'll talk about too. So I think we've got a whole chart.
But I know, I know that we go through the budget. I think, I think just the biggest question is, I, I, here's my perception. It's already defined. The categories are already defined, really. Because the federal government has, it's already, like I hear, it's already defined. They can use it this way. So I'm thinking it's already defined. We really don't have any say so how it's.
It's, but it's not. So we'll, maybe we'll, I'll add some more comments tomorrow to some of the information. I think some of the, we're going to talk a little bit about some of the feedback we've gotten and some of the ways we're going to prioritize it. And I think they'll help answer some of those questions for you.
I want to push back, or not push back, but one thing that you were talking about, solving the issues that, you know, COVID and the pandemic has caused. I want to point out that many of the issues, most of the issues that we are saying that COVID has caused really just illuminating the issue.
Yes.
That, that this new influx of resources and the opportunity to rethink education is, should be looked at, we should look at this as an opportunity to deal with the inequities that existed long before. I want to talk about inequities. I'm also, I'm talking about access to internet, those type of inequities. Not necessarily, you know, just talk about income for racial and that's your point. But think of your, of this as not as fixing what happened in the last 15 months, a decade before that. Because all the issues that we have talked about through the pandemic are not new. There are simply a light that's been shown on them at these issues. So it's, it's not about a short-term fix. It's about a long-term investment to solve problems that happened that existed. So anyway, that's just a mindset, you know, in, in my thinking. So if you, if you think about, if you could have said, you know, for, for instance, we have often said that for decades now, that school should be defined not as a place. But students should have access to 24-hour learning whenever they need, whenever they want. And school should not be four, four walls. Well, we had to hurry up at the beginning of pandemic and we had to define that. We had to shift to that immediately. And so, but we've never done it before because we, we said, well, we can't do this because of this, 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 this. We soon found out that we could do it and we had to do it. So there are many, many issues like that out there that I think we have the opportunity now to address. Let me just ask if you, anybody wants to share, if you, if you had, had said before the pandemic or now, what if we could do this? What if we could do this? What are some of those things that you, that you had, that you wish you could have done? Or you wish you could do or have always hoped you could do for education or with education? What if, give me a what-if statement. What if we did this? Why couldn't we not?
What if we could have created scholarships that feed opportunities for, to build up our education pipeline for starting maybe even middle school to become educators and they, it's a program such that they can go all the way through, they can obtain a bachelor's degree. So we are very intentional in having programs. It's like we have many science programs, very intentional middle school. This is when they determine their, their, their field of study, their careers. And we are very intentional becoming educators then. What if we created within their school systems that they have such a culture, but they want to be educators? What if we create an environment just for them for that? I have passion for that, you know, so.
What if?
What if? What if, I'm not sure how to word it, what if we had systems of education that effectively implemented competency-based education, individualized education? So that my kindergarten granddaughter could be in second grade math, doing second grade math, but in a classroom she can't do that. She's stuck in her kindergarten classroom. What if we had more systems for competency-based math?
And even then, our social studies papers that we're writing is overlapping with the research that we're doing in science. And why can't the work that we're doing in all of these separate classes combine to meet one standard? Because all the standards do overlap. But we're spending hours outside of school doing homework to meet these standards that we could be doing a lot better things with our time if we're in sports, if we're working a part-time job, if we're in like being involved in extracurricular opportunities that we don't have the opportunity to be involved with in school.
Yeah, well, I really, Betty addressed the issue, but what if we had individual learning plans? Not just for children who are being, who are challenged or having difficulty in school. Instead, IEPs just for a small group. What if we had an individual lesson plan for every kid, lesson plans? So they can move seamlessly through the system. And as Betty said, I could be doing calc in the sixth grade or I could be, yeah. You know, I, I don't have to wait for the rest of the class, but I'm not socially excluded either.
Right.
You know, I, I think that's the challenge of, of the future is, is how can we do that with kids? And use our time and resources better than we have in the past. And we certainly haven't done the best job we could.
And your what-if statement.
I have one. So I think with the pandemic, we've realized that when students can't go to school, they lose access to a lot of opportunities. And so what if students were able to have access to individual, individual adult mentors and adult partners inside and outside of the school building? So those supports don't stop when they leave the building.
I want to follow that. What if? I want to ask this out, the same people that answered that. I want to answer this question. Why not?
Inertia.
What if, Kimberly, what if you wanted to create that type of, of a pipeline for teachers? Why not?
I'm coming across.
What has kept you from doing that?
Resources and, and the, the resources.
Resource.
Creativity.
No, resources, you're talking about.
People and time.
Human capacity, human capital and financial capital.
Correct. I think that knowledge is out there. It's no doubt. We have, people know how to do it, but it's the fight, like I came across a person. They were like, well, we're the funding that. Oh, okay. Hold on, let me find out.
Betty, why not? Why, why not, your, whatever that, that effective capacity.
I think because I, I said inertia and I kind of think that's it. Because, you know, we've always done it this way and it would take a lot of work and thought and energy to change it. And so.
Policies out there that could, but they can't.
Maybe, yeah.
It would, it would need a complete shift in what education is. It's, is it just learning the content or is it meeting the standards to learn the skills that we need to do the work in the future? Because in the future, what we're going to be doing is getting jobs that aren't, aren't even created yet. And to do those jobs, you're not going to just need the calculus knowledge from, from 11th and 12th grade. You're going to need to have the skills to reason through problems that you haven't been taught how to approach cutting dry.
Well, Hannah, why, why not the 24/7 access? What prohibits that?
Yeah, I mean, teachers need to have lives, right? So. I mean, the research is there, right? There's ACES reports that show the effects and the impacts that a caring adult can have in one student's life. Students who have been exposed to multiple different traumas, the research is there, but I don't know what's keeping us from doing it.
Passing availability of the, of the, of the right amount and the right number of people. Not just that you said teaching, like, well, do we have, have double the number of teachers? Why, why not have, that we cannot do what you want to do?
Well, Betty's right. There's a lot of inertia that the ball is big and it's rolling and you get in front of it, you get rolled over. You need to create people. You need dynamic leadership. You need teachers who are trained to do things differently and effectively. And we, we have examples, I think, in the country. But we, we just need to take that and move it everywhere. And again, we have really good teachers at public school teachers. I know that. I'm so blessed that I was one of those folks. And I have not disparaging anyone, but man on man, the responsibilities we lay on those people every day. And this past year, it's amazing that they were able to survive it.
Exactly.
But how can we get that, that leadership? How can we get people excited? Or can we get the resources maybe to retrain folks on the way they need to be trained?
Can I, I have a, I have a what-if, sorry. Okay, so I have a what-if would be, so, and I think I've mentioned this before, you know, having a son who is in preschool. I think that, and this kind of piggybacks on a couple, just having that access to learning all the time. So I find myself constantly, because we're working on phonetics, you know, with words and sight words and things like that. So like in the car when we're riding, like I'm trying to like, we're helping, going through like sending out different letters and trying to make words and put the connection together when we're reading at night and things like that. So I think it's, uh, having access to all those resources as a parent, when I can do it in the car, I can do it on vacation. I can do it where, like just like where I am on my phone. I can, you know, I need to have access like wherever, because this is where I'm doing it. I'm doing it when we're sitting at the pool, you know? And then it's also, I think, what if we could educate parents and give them the resources so that they are the teachers? I mean, I think there are so many times when, I mean, you know, that parents are asking questions and then they're just kind of like the phantom, you know, whatever. And it's just like, so they don't know what to do and they don't know where to turn. And they want to help their child the best way they can, but maybe they can't, or maybe they don't even know what questions to ask. So I think that standing up parents and giving them the tools to help educate their children can really do a lot.
Why not? Why isn't that happening?
I think that maybe the resources aren't out there. Maybe the communication isn't out there. Maybe, I know the resources are out there. I mean, I, I know during the pandemic, I turned to so many different resources. I mean, but I think that I, I had, you know, friends that I could, to ask, you know, hey, what, what things do you, you know, what apps do you use? What things can you trust on the internet? You know, Conica, I mean, Kids is awesome, you know, PBS Kids, things like that, you know? But maybe some parents, I think for, if English is your second language here, or you know, or if you have other barriers, if you don't have an iPad and iPhone and, you know, I mean, if you don't have all these different things, you can't just sit at the pool and just, you know, do this or in the car, can't, you know? And maybe if you don't know even just the building blocks of reading, I'm not saying I know a lot, but like, you know, I know that we should be working on sounds and I talked to his preschool teacher and this is what we should be working on and putting words together. I mean, if you don't even know that, then how, how would you do that?
Think of the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of parents that don't have.
Right.
You know, where to even ask the question. They don't know to ask the questions. Those are, you know.
You know, the resources.
Yeah. Or they might ask the teacher and the teacher might be so overwhelmed that teacher might just be like, oh, don't worry about it, whatever. Parents like, okay, I won't worry about it, you know?
Another issue is that, you know, parents like you, Brooke, have the, the drive to do that and want to do what's best for your kid. All parents want to do what's best for their kids. Some parents are under a lot of stress and don't have the time or energy or maybe even the knowledge base to do the types of things that you. So when you, when you talk about what if, you know, to me, what if is always a matter of time.
Yeah.
You can somehow redirect time, but we're such a time, time-driven. I mean, it's like you have to, to get this credit, you have to be in your seat next number of hours to get a credit.
Hey, yes, you guys appreciate this and I digress a little bit, just as grandpa. I'm a 75-year-old grandpa. I own a resort in Okoboji. I'm gonna measure out eight grandkids. Well, I took care of three of them for the past 10 days. Three, five and seven.
You still have hair.
I can't imagine that working mom who's by herself taking care of those kids. Trying to do everything she can to take care of them, just doesn't have the resources and help. And she's exhausted. Would you guess? Tired she is when she gets home and still she finds time for those kids.
Yeah.
We help.
What kind of system can you put in place? Works, right?
But then also like speaking to that, I mean, I think that it's, uh, and I think the pandemic has shown us this, but I don't think we're there yet, you know? I mean, I've had conversations, you know, being a working mom, like that mom guilt is, is real. And the higher up I think you go in your career, the more, you know, when I, like my, my daughter has only, now I'm going back to work three days a week. And so every time I leave, like my husband, I got home yesterday and he's like, she's just been calling for you all day long because she's only been without me. She's 20 months old for two months. Because I was on maternity leave, I went to work for two months and then I went home, right? So now I'm back in the office three days a week. So I think that, you know, being a parent, whether, you know, you have the mom guilt or the dad guilt, I think the flexibility is, is great. Working from home, I mean, I can't tell you how many times I would put the kids to bed and then I would just go downstairs and work, you know, just, and I could knock out things and, you know? But then that gave me time during the day that I actually could respond to their needs and give them what they needed during the day. That flexibility, and I think that our system still, I, I think, listening to you like talk about kind of like how we're overlapping and things like that. I'm like, our work lives are like that. How many times am I at work and I'm just like, okay, I have nothing to do right now. So I'll wait for, I'm waiting for like five people to get back to me. So let me just sit here until my thumbs for 20 minutes or I could go do something. So maybe I'll go grab a quick walk or something, you know? But I mean, those, those are moments that I'm just like, if we could just kind of, I feel like our schools are reflected in our, in our jobs. And I mean, there are so many moments in time I think are just like, if we had that flexibility where we could, I, you know, I mean, I don't know. Maybe not making sense, but that's kind of how I.
I remember Mike talking about, you, you're talking about time. You know, I, I made the comment more than once last day before, when I was sitting in NC with, okay, let's just tell all of our parents. If your kid's home for a year, let us work this out.
Yeah, yeah.
Let us figure out what we just had.
Wow.
It's that inertia, you know, we kind of let them keep them home for a year now.
I was going to say. But we didn't do it.
And what is our legacy for that? You gave me some what-ifs and then you told me why not? What if I told you, right? The dog has caught the car. Well, you know, that dog, we want to pitch a car for a long time. Finally caught the car. Okay, I'm telling you right now that you have a moment in time that many of those things that you just said, what ifs? You may have caught the car. What are you going to do with it? What are you going to do? This is your moment in time to think through some of those things that, that, you know, what are you going to do? So we reframed the question. Let's reframe our mindset about these things that we just talked about. Let's reframe our mindset. There are four things, and I hate to be formulaic, but there are four things and recipe, I think, to really attack this. Number one, four things that you need to reframe these issues is ask yourself, do we have the knowledge that we need? Do we have the research and evidence to support that? So think about those things that you just told me that you wanted to do. And think about the reasons you said they could not happen. Now, ask me, do we have the knowledge? So Kimberly, do you have the, do you have the research and evidence to support what you want to do? Yeah.
Yes.
You know that. You know the knowledge.
Yes.
Hey, do you have the knowledge to do that? You absolutely do. As a matter of fact, we have a peer review journal that comes out three times a year. I don't know if you, if you just got yours in the mail, you probably should. It's one on one, Reimagining School. If you look at the issue, you look at a, a, the article that Susan Patrick wrote for us, beginning on page 22, about transforming learning through competency-based, there are two maps that Iowa is highlighted as the leading highest, highest capacity board. So Betty, I can have the knowledge. Okay, I, I, I have a peer review journal that I published that showed you that. Anyway, you have the knowledge. The second question you need to ask yourself, do we have the experience? Do we have the data? The knowledge and evidence is meaning, do we know what the problem is? And do we have, you know, the, 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 the research to. You know, the 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 research to to back that up. Then now, do we have the data? Do we have the experience? We probably have them now from last fifteen to eighteen months. We have some new data about these things. We know especially about the one you're talking about, that people learning from home and twenty four seven learning, we have a lot of new data now. We have some research studies that have come out, we have the knowledge, we have the experience, we have done it. Ladies and gentlemen, you now have more resources than you've ever had. You have an opportunity and some resources to do that. So if you're reframing your mindset and three of the four ingredients is the knowledge, the experience and the resource. What's missing out of this resource, of this recipe?
Will.
The political will. You have the political will to make that. I'm not talking about. I'm talking about the state infrastructure, your your state education infrastructure, you're not talking about the governor, you're talking about the legislature, you're talking about districts. How can you, as a state board of education, use your power of the question? How can you use your power to convene to have these conversations go on in our state? Your state. But anyway, think about that, about. You have political will to make it happen. In other words, how do we remove our excuses?
Just get it down to the case.
I wanna get down down to it. You know, don't don't give me empty promises that you want to make this happen. And always before, it was it was really true that you could look back and say, well, we really don't have all the experience driving and then none of this. We can't make school twenty four seven. We just had school twenty four seven for eighteen months, folks. People could teach to learn. Uh, we now have a lot of, we've been a lot of great research and evidence coming out the last eighteen months about what's happened. Lots. And now have resources, they might still be limited. And you also, you're going to have more resources coming because if you look at, you know. If if this administration has any impact on the federal budget. You know, the budget request is, you know, is a vast increase of federal federal uh uh money for education. I don't know what that'll look like once it makes the Congress because. The only benefit, the only benefit of administration is that like, but a president pretends to budget. The only benefit of that is really for you to see what the priorities are, but it's it's it is a phantom budget, it doesn't make its way through. But it does say these are going to be priorities for the next couple of years to try to make things happen, but anyway. So I invite you to think to re to reframe your mindset and looking at not just saying why we can't. But what do we have a political will to work?
And and doesn't that link though to understanding what our state priorities are though for legislature, like we have to really understand. That's one thing I'm trying I'm trying to understand is really what is their priorities because that's what's gonna happen, that's really what's gonna get.
But also, Kimberly, I agree with you one hundred percent that that this is a. This is symbiotic relationship that they have, they have this and you and then how can you all make it happen? But is there also the opportunity for you to influence that?
Right, I was gonna make a comment on that.
There's jurisdictions because I got burned. That we have, we have, there is a protocol and I've learned some of that, so, you know, we have. And I need to learn that more, like, what can we?
Not as you, Kimberly, as an individual.
Yeah.
Like you as a state board as a body.
Yeah.
You know, it's.
But I think we don't want to know what it is as a body.
Yeah.
Honestly.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I haven't really come up with a legislative or anything that, yeah, as a body, really.
We have a political will, we want to try to attack this, and how they can work with the legislature and government to make that. It's conversation, it's working together. State boards of education are one of the la- one of the few places left in this country. That you can have civil discourse. It doesn't happen usually.
Well, some state boards, but.
It certainly doesn't happen down the street from where I live. It 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 doesn't, it rarely happens in most legislative bodies anymore. It rarely happens even on the local level. State boards of education are the last bastions of public civic, the civil discourse where you check your party ticket at the door and you come in and solve problems. So kudos to you for making making that happen, and part of that is engaging your partners and talking about it. What if, say, the state board really has a vision, we would love to see this happen in our state, pick one of those things. Now, you can't do all of these things, get something that you want to do and begin that conversation and say, okay, we have the knowledge, we have the experience, we have the resources. Can we muster some political in the state to make it happen? It's it's a win win for everyone, so. That's, sorry, that's sermon number three for the day.
Sorry, Georgia, did you have a comment?
Well, I was just gonna say, you don't have to sit and take it, I mean, from the legislature either, I mean, that's our job too. I mean, even though the governor or the administration's budget might not be something that passes on its own, it is does set. What the administration's priorities are and is part of that negotiation process. So, I mean, then that's our job and ends to be working with the governor, you know, to get those priorities. In what she submits as a budget and and education priorities as well. So that's where, while we're not elected officials setting the policy, that's kind of part of the policy process. Of trying to get that in there and and influence it. And then the legislature does what they want to do, right, but then at least these ideas are out there and somebody. You hope the governor, because if it's in her budget, her policy priority, she's gonna battle. Against the legislature or work with them to get some of the priorities that we're looking at.
So we really haven't, I'm been, this is my, one of my third years, we haven't really, okay.
No, we haven't really.
I like what you're saying.
Yeah.
We just have to get there.
If anyone knows the process, it's Georgia.
Yeah, okay. Talk with the department and had a stance on something to come to the legislature with in my in my terms.
So we we started a legislate, or tried to, I think, right? Two years ago, I think, um, and Josh was gonna be the chair of that, remember that, buddy? We kind of talked about that and we tried and then. I think COVID kind of happened and then we just kind of tossed everything to the wind and and Josh left. And and so we haven't really had any of those discussions or anything like that, so I, you know, I think that's something that, um, we've talked about maybe. Doing, because I think that that's something that I I know that, like, you know, Nebraska State Board of Education, they have a legislative committee. And that committee goes and they, you know, and they can talk to the governor and they can talk to it, so that's. If we have things that we want, that might be something for a discussion later on today, is something that we want to do. Um, but yeah, so we kind of started that and then stopped it, I guess, is.
Cause on one of my notes I prepared for days, what is the influence that this board has on as far as proposed legislation?
Yeah.
And we'll talk about later, I guess.
Yeah, so and I think that, yeah, I think that having having a committee that kind of focuses on it and then have, yeah, because I, yeah, I think that that's probably the best kind of ways.
Yeah, because that's the second to last bullet point for our responsibilities, advocating on major educational issues to the executive and legislation branches, so, okay.
One of the most important lessons we learn when it comes to legislation and policy is, i- if you want to change it, it's about relationships. And and if you don't develop a relationship with your legislator. You don't get anything done.
Exactly.
And if I was your legislator and I didn't trust you because I don't know you, I don't have a relationship with you, how far on land do you think I go?
Exactly.
Very far.
Yeah. We used to have those meetings and everything where we could meet them, but that was only once a year, we didn't even have that last year.
And that's true. I just think that's that's part of the process here. Have to develop.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we got it.
And I made that clip earlier, but it's true, make your friends before you need them.
There you go.
And I would argue there are a number of teachers in the legislature that do a great job, and Mike is one of them, advocating on behalf of the. Education process too, and so finding those friends early.
Yeah.
Is helpful.
Well, I truly misjudged time, I have, I only have about twelve minutes left, so. Keep on your on your schedule, my apologies for rambling, but I think it's been a good discussion. So we reframe, let's rethink just a minute, a couple of things, I want, I'll I'll go through these really, really quickly. I'll talk a little bit about COVID impact and things for you, but for you to think about. Um, and I'll just, I won't read these to you, but by comparison from national education statistics. Talking about the difference between September and April with, there were fifteen fifty two million adults. That were teaching the kids at home. Uh, that that had kids eighteen or under, and you see that. The percentage that that are now back, uh, you know, to to online learning, so I mean, back from online learning, the impact. So also a point on this I didn't put on the slide, but there are over three million kids that we have not heard from since the pandemic started. We don't know where they are. Even the the schools can't find them, there are three, over three million children in this country that have not had any interaction with the school since pandemic. I don't know how many of those are in Iowa, if there are any.
Do we know? In Iowa?
What has been, we hear a lot about interrupted learning, first of all, I I just a personal preference, I never use the term. Uh, learning loss, because I think that says that that puts the onus on the kid. It's not a child issue, this is a system issue, so while I refer to it as interrupted learning, I know for the, it was the opportunity. Not the kid's fault that that happened, but if you look at this, uh, this is just with statistics from Renaissance Star Assessments. That basically says that. Well, you can read that there, but the the last line is that, uh, the last point there is that, uh, late elementary and early middle schools are still eight to seven. Uh, eight to eleven with five in math, and middle school students are about six to ten weeks behind in reading. So there is some uninterrupted learning, there's some unfinished learning, uh, here that we need to consider. And the good news is, we have lots of excellent research, now that we should not be talking about remediation. We should not be saying that with these two disease remediation, that, uh, we have done several webinars. For board members, if you if you've been on any of them, and we did a couple of office hours on accelerated art. And how that is different, that we need in this country not to think about immediate students. Which means going back and taking through everything is, we have, we have solid research now. It shows that all students should be taught on grade level, period. You should never be taught below your grade level. You should talk on your grade level and when there's a particular skill you're missing, you drop down and do that one skill, you don't go back and put kids through everything. There is a vast amount of of research on that, and I can provide that for you, uh, go go to our website. And listen to the two or three webinar to a pet, Johns Hopkins. Doctor Steiner there, uh, and we have resources to prepare you, so. I was gonna spend a little more time on this, but the time is just running.
That's what we do here with the MTSS systems, right?
And that actually is the approach we're taking.
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah.
So, uh, anyway, let's go on then, this, these are some COVID issues. That how reshaping education probably need to be aware of. That we do have a survey that talks about there's plenty, there's a sixteen percent drop in kindergarten enrollments across the country. That kids are not enrolling in kindergarten for this coming year, what does that mean? That means that you're probably going to have a huge bubble following year, so don't look at this because. Delay, how does, how does that, what does that mean for you? Absenteeism is, uh, uh, we had a sevenfold increase. And the number of students missing fifty percent. And it's been an exact reverse of what absentee used to be. It used to be that it was seeing my younger students, older now, it's the exact opposite because of pandemic. And also, high school dropout UNESCO has said that twenty four million children worldwide are at risk of of dropping out of school. And we've seen that true on state levels as too, so these are some huge impacts that we see how education maybe reshaped. Uh, the cause of the pandemics and issues that not just for this year, but.
Do you collect any data on food insecurity and students and how reshaping education with that in mind?
Right, there's a great, I've been, we can get that for you from, uh, we, one of our partners, it's no kid hungry. Um, and they have fabulous research on that, so if you're interested, we can certainly. Provide that for you, yes, that is being collected. Uh, I don't know if you're familiar with Learning Heroes, they're a great organization, they do lots of polling amongst our parents. And this is just something that from one of their recent polls that says, uh, they asked the parents, is that you think about your, how your child's done this whole year? What do you think your child is academically? Uh, sixty three percent of the parents think that kids are either a little behind or way behind. That is the parent perception, only thirty four percent think that they, of course, they should be. And you say, well, that may not be, uh, really, uh, uh, played out or verified by data, because that is the parent perception. So you need to, you know, keep, that's why. Parents are thinking, and about fifty two percent of are extremely or very confident. That your child will be well prepared for next year, so that's a little bit of, uh, parent perception of where kids are. Also, there's a a big impact on transition to post-secondary education. And this one is, this is where there really is an equity issue, then in August. Of twenty twenty, thirty one percent of adults eighteen years of older who had a household member who was planning on taking college courses or post-secondary courses. They canceled, that that opportunity should have been a big drop in transition to secondary education. And you look at the bottom where, uh, how that that is spread across, uh, uh, across the spectrum for equity, so. Uh, those, you know, Betty, you and Mike have talked about colleges and end of transition. There's been a huge delay in that, and one of the things that our folks are thinking or are concerned about is. Some of those students probably had benefit of financial aid that may not be in it. In in play because they 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 didn't go directly from high school, and so they may have lost a lot of financial, so that's a big, that's a big issue. Also, there, this kind of goes to what Kimberly said, education next, I don't know if you read education next. Um, in the website or the publication, but they're saying saying that the, uh, the unemployment rate of people that were out of jobs due to COVID. May actually be a good thing for the teaching profession because they're seeing a lot of them entering into non-traditional teaching paths to become teachers. So they're they're, they actually have research now that says that people that have lost jobs of the sector are now looking toward, uh, teaching. As a, as a process.
Oh, because of the stability of it or something?
Yeah, I think the stability of it and, uh, also, uh. Uh, it's, even though it's not high paid, it's better paid than what they're able to get, it's a reentering the market or a pay cost, yeah. But I think this kind of is an interesting, again, from, um, it's the, uh, it's a national survey of parents from the Walton Family Foundation. That asked parents, which of the two viewpoints they held? That they, were they inclined to agree that this is a time for some major bold changes in education? Or they thought, maybe it's not the time for for making bold changes. Uh, fifty eight percent of parents surveyed said that this is a time that they would be willing to entertain, I think it's time for some bold change in education. So there may be some political will from the general public. That people may be willing to look at change now, now that they were up before because they see what possible. I know many times when you try to do change in school or reform how school looks. The parents, you know, the community, well, you know, you're changing, I went to school, that's the way school was, that's the way school should be. Now, because of the pandemic and because of what you've experienced, it seems like it's possible. And it's, you know, it may not be a bad thing, so you may also have a window of opportunity to change because of public opinion. The public opinion may be behind us. Making some change. Um, you you'll have access to these, you have these slides, you can share, you can read these yourself. But again, this is from that same Walton Family Foundation. Uh, that ask how effective would in would some of these things be in helping their students, uh, coming out of the pandemic? And, uh, you know, some of the things you talked about, about offering more college credit or providing teachers with better materials. A special funding for students, all the way down to creating more school options, charter schools, learning pods and what have you. So you can see here that the percentage of, uh, parents who thought that that would be a very effective thing for state boards to encourage. Now, this is a national survey, I do not know. Uh, I didn't delve into the the survey enough to know if they have state level available or not, but this is the national, uh, they they what they think. Okay, let me look, check my time here, wow, I've got one minute. I said that the president's budget for fiscal twenty two is 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 with any president's budget. Is it is really a proxy for what their priorities should want to be. That really is what it is, and you can see there that that's that what has has come out of the administration going to Congress, that we're we're, we want to see. And a huge in in, uh. Interest in early, early childhood education, uh, and from there and. Making historic investments in high poverty schools and also prioritizing the mental, they will be students. And they're proposing a huge, I don't know, one grant, so who knows what that will look like when it makes its way through, uh, congressional budget, budget. That's something you don't want to watch, it's just not a pretty sight. We watch it and we monitor it on a daily basis, and actually, that's something, that's part of our work. We do a lot of advocacy, we're in meetings, you know, every, every week with congressional staff, with, you know, senatorial staff and congressional staff. About this is what state boards need, this is what states want, so if you let us know, we can help, you know, with that advocacy as well. And I'll just flash this up there real quickly, although it, who knows, if you're talking about the American Job Plan, those things in the blue are the. If you're talking about the American Jobs Plan, those things in the blue are the things that are in that plan. It impacts schools, it impacts public education. So there's about six hundred and fifty billion dollars there that is unlikely that it's going to go anywhere in terms of, as a package, but to our cost of it and pieces of it that probably are, especially there. If you tune in tomorrow at two thirty, I'm leading a discussion, uh, on this, the hundred million dollars in, in high school broadband deployment. That's really coming. There, there's a big opportunity here for your state here and what else can we change? So we're having experts on to watch and shock the best. There is, uh, you know, the nonpartisan, I mean, the bipartisan, uh, committees that are working on it now, there is actually a, one proposal that, that the jobs plan, uh, removing all, uh, all school funding. So then, you know, who knows, it'll be anything, but this is what was proposed, I can say that. I was just going to talk to you about the new maintenance of equity provision that you, that your department here will know all about that. They can tell you about that. About instead of having just your maintenance, if ever, we've been, um, working with the department on this and it just released yesterday that you now have a maintenance of equity provision. You know, I was going to talk about that. But anyway, I am, am going to quit. I mean, just, I was going to ask you to rethink by looking at just a little bit of your state data and how you compare to the nation. But just suffice it to say that, uh, in terms of student makeup, you actually, this is the, how, how the makeup has changed across the country. Your state mirrors that with the exception of one, you are, um, you are seeing an increasing, uh, trend in black population. And it's a, it's a decrease in public schools, uh, across the country. So anyway, that's the only place that you buck the trend in terms of student population. Student enrollment in terms of the students who are economically disadvantaged. You can see you're at forty, forty-two percent of, in terms of students that, uh, are what we consider economically disadvantaged from, uh, free and educated. And, uh, living in, those that live in poverty, thirteen percent. You see where you compare with the nation, you are a little bit, uh, your state, a little bit, uh, a different trend that is a nation, you're seeing, uh, student, uh, living, rubbing drop for the last three years from nineteen to seventeen. We're using slight increase from twelve up to fourteen.
Is children in poverty, that's different than free reduced?
Children in poverty is how you, how the Census Bureau would, uh, would, would use it for the community survey data that.
Oh, yeah.
So that would be, that would be from census data. Here, I was just going to talk a little bit about where you compare with, uh, when your average scale scores for Hispanic students and Black students. And you'll see that you're at the color slide there, color scale goes from an average scale score, like, like the one on the left side of the screen. This is not Hispanic students. The high score is two twenty-one, the lowest one ninety-eight. You're toward the lower end of the six. The same thing for Black students, two thirteen down to one ninety, one eighty-eight. You're toward the lower end of that of one hundred and ninety-two. So just sharing that. And I'm just, I'm going to just, these are, I want to scope, because I want to get to, to a last slide here. These were the, um, again, I want to point out a few as we ended, uh, much string to political will to do so. If you have an interest in a tool to help you talk through some of your, this is something that we use and, uh, and have used at NASA, it's called Asset Map. That is, if you have not done this, where you start with yourself as an individual board member, then look at your state board's assets and your state's assets. So let's say that for instance, you decide that, 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 that you have a certain issue here. Anyway, at the top, I want you to start, you decide whatever your issue is, you start at the center of that and you look at your individual, uh, you, what you as an individual board member bring, what do you have any issue expertise? Do you have any skills? Do you have expert contacts? Then you broaden that, what are the state board's assets as a whole and as your, as your, a corporate body, what are your authorities and policy members, what are your schedule of events around that? Do you have any connection with this initiative? And then you look at your state as a whole and do the same thing. And then you do your limitations and considerations again. This is a great process. Make yourself, do you want, you know, what your priorities are, how you want to move forward. And so, um, I'm going to take a breath and say that I appreciate your time. I have five minutes over. My apologies for breaking the hand for being five minutes. So that you can contact me. There's my cell number. Call my cell number anytime and it's my distinct hope that this is not how I want you. But it's going to pleasure to be here and I'm going to take a seat. Sure. And I love that information.
It's, it's good, good stuff.
I mean, so he was going to overview, like, get down to the legislation. So I talked to him this morning, he said he was going to.
No, um, David downloaded the, uh, his presentation on that LoNer laptop. So, yeah, uh, I can either grab it off.
Okay, yeah.
Well, we could figure it out or you can email it to me, whatever, Cece.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I'm going to stay around a little while.
I give a hospitable person. He, he greets everyone for us.
Okay, I'll ask him if he has anything else on that. I think he kind of touched on, he didn't want to talk too much about, but the specific legislation, you wanted him to talk about like Iowa legislation.
Well, no, I mean, let's just adjourn for a minute and take a break.
Okay.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Take like five, ten minutes. Um, David, we're going to go offline.